Okay.
I'll ask everybody to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in the civil liberty and justice of our all.
Julie, roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Present.
Counselor Trask.
Present.
Counselor Gorley.
Present.
Counselor Coleman.
Present.
Sanchez, here. Or Richards.
Present.
Let the record show we have seven present with no absent. Before we get started, I will go ahead and go over the meeting instructions for online participation in public meetings. And if anybody has cell phones, ask them to either silence them and turn them off, please. At this time, thank you for everyone who's joined us this evening. For members of the public who would like to take part in tonight's meeting virtually, we have some instructions to help in case you are new to using Microsoft Teams. To take part, you will need to locate the chat bubble icon to participate in the meeting online. The chat bubble icon indicated with a yellow arrow on your screen now may be in the upper right hand corner of your screen, or you may need to click on three dots to see the extended drop down menu. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak during the meeting, please choose the bubble icon to enter the meeting chat. It will appear on the right hand side of your screen. In the chat, enter your name, address, phone number, followed by the topic you wish to discuss to the council. If you have signed in, you may be called upon to speak at any point during the meeting, but probably during the agenda item you have entered to speak about. You can choose a hand icon also located in the upper right hand corner to indicate your desire to speak. It's equivalent to raising your hand. The mayor, the acting chairperson, or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We'll give everyone who may wish, may speak tonight a few minutes right now to their name, address, phone number, and the topic they'd like to address with the council. In the interest of time, speakers should not repeat the points of previous speakers. Instead, state you agree with their point or disagree with their point. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes, and the extension of that time will be at the sole discretion of the mayor or the meeting chairperson per council rules. Those joining by phone will be noted by the moderator for the mayor, chairperson, and called to speak at appropriate time. The fact that meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior, and the mayor does retain the right to have people removed from the meeting as stated in council rules. At this time, consent agenda.
Move for approval.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to second. My roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Aye.
Let the record show we have seven ayes with no nays, approval of the consent agenda. At this time, any recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. Anybody who would like to come forth be heard before council. Well, unless you're talking about the lid, they, then we wait till that topic comes up. If it's anything else, then you can come forth. Okay. At this time, old business, request for council action. Willow, Yucca Street Neighborhood Local Improvement District, LID.
Once again, Mr. Mayor, it's on page fifteen of your packet for me that'd like to follow along. I'm gonna go ahead and I'll let Blair go through all of this, including the history of how we've gotten here and what we've done at this point in time.
Thank you. So first, some background on this. In December twenty nineteen, residents of the Willow and Yucca Street neighborhood petitioned the city for the formation of a local improvement district, or LID, to extend city water infrastructure and service to the neighborhood and construct sidewalk and street improvements, all of which that neighborhood currently lacks. City staff developed a potential boundary list, a list of requested improvements, cost estimates, and an initial, an initial cost assessment methodology. As dictated by Sweet Home Usable Code, chapter three point one six, there were four selected viewers that reviewed this methodology. They met on January eighteenth of twenty twenty-one and January, January twenty-one, twenty-first of twenty twenty-one to investigate the proposed LID maps, cost estimates, and assessment methodology. They submitted their report and recommendations to the council, which was reviewed at the February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one council meeting. That council meeting also included a public hearing on the matter. Residents of the neighborhood were given notice via certified mail of the public hearing, and several expressed their views on the issue. At that meeting, the city council directed staff to research ways to bring down the cost of the project and develop a more reasonable assessment of the costs. City staff revised the project by reducing some of the street infrastructure in the proposal and developed some revisions to the assessment of costs in order to reflect the development potential of larger properties and delay the related payment to the time of development or twenty years, whichever comes first. In addition, one of the property owners who owns a majority of the properties in the proposed LID offered to forego any grant or city funding on his properties and allow any such funding to be spread among all the other properties. This has resulted in a significant cost reductions for many of the properties, dependent of, of course, upon any grant or city contribution. City staff organized two community, community meetings regarding the revisions and notified residents of the meetings. These meetings were held on April twentieth and April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one. While lightly attended those meetings enabled staff to explain the methodology and options in detail and answer questions from residents regarding the impact of the LID specific to them. In addition, a reporter from the New Era was present and able to gather information for his audience. Although not required by city code, staff determined that another public hearing should be held before the city council at this meeting before proceeding further. This public hearing was advertised in the New Era, and multiple notices were sent to the owners, owners of the property within the proposed LID. So in your packet, you do have the, all of the data that we've collected thus far, including the maps of the area, as well as the, the spreadsheet. The spreadsheet in your packet, we did find, due to a, a resident that contacted me, we did find an error. And so there's a hard copy in front of you that has a corrected version. And there is also, for the members of the audience, there is also copies over on the table here, as well as copies of the maps there. So that is the most current version. If, if you run out of copies, please let us know, and we will print out some more. So the, the intent behind a local improvement district is to allow areas without city infrastructure to, to allow them a way to get city infrastructure built. Essentially, it's not, the, the construction of, of this infrastructure is not, is not something the city typically does. Usually such infrastructure is put in by a developer, and then the city takes it over and maintains it. We usually don't do the initial construction. However, this particular part of the city was annexed into the city already in the state that it was in, and it was previously in county land, and then later brought into the city, which is why normally if it, if it's development that is done within the city, we have certain standards that we require of developers before the city will take on the street or to, to ensure that there's water service, sewer service, and such to the properties. There was an LID in this area previously to bring sewer service to the properties. That was partially or mostly funded, I believe, with some, some grant help. I, I don't know the exact history on that, but those, these properties all have sewer service to them, but they lack water. And I believe that covers most of the background. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you, but right now, the, the, the purpose of this hearing is to hear from the public again, but also give staff indication on whether we should move forward or not. The spreadsheet that you have in front of you and the, and the cost estimates are that, they are estimates. It's, we, we don't have the ability to lock prices in, unfortunately. We wish we could. But one thing to keep in mind is this estimate does assume some city involvement, and that is one of the reasons why, one of the, the things that needs to be resolved in this meeting is to indicate whether you as a council are, are will. We'll say that if there is no city participation when it comes to the funding, the costs will likely be prohibitive and very difficult for residents in the neighborhood and would likely result in much more of an outcry. But the, the cost, this spreadsheet, and it assumes about three hundred thousand dollars that the city would put in over a, a thirty year period, whatever the financing of it is. So that, that's what, that's kind of the, the, the best case scenario we could figure as, as staff. Am I missing anything? Any other questions? Any questions on this?
At this time, I will open up questions of counselors while the audience has a chance to go through that spreadsheet. And I will give the audience a chance to talk tonight, so don't panic. I will be allowing you to speak.
I will add that there is only a couple of properties at the bottom of the spreadsheet that were affected by the mistake, so most people.
So at this, at this time, I will go ahead and open it up for counselors for questions and discussion. Any questions of counselors or discussion?
So Blair, you said that they're lacking water. Is that city water, or they have their own water, or can you clarify that a little bit, please?
They're lacking city water. I should, the, the properties in this area all either have their own well, or they share wells among them. I believe prior to this coming forth in the petition, there was kind of a scare where DEQ had, had put out some test results and were concerned about the water quality in the, in the neighborhood. Since then, and so, and so people were worried about not being able to use their wells because of certain levels of, of different elements being too high. But since then, DEQ has, has found that they weren't as high as they initially thought, and it was still drinkable water. So all our data is right now suggests that the wells are fine at this time. But the, the intent with bringing water service to the area is that it, it essentially makes it more of a reliable source of water than individual wells.
Yeah, there's, yeah. Yeah, the thing is, the other thing is, is they told that some of the wells go dry, so they have to haul in water to some of these places. There are any dry sea.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and share just a, and this is not for or against this, so don't anybody take this the wrong way. But for counselors to re, to remember this on, regarding this, is there's a lot of undeveloped streets within our, within our city. And a lot, a lot of that was back in the day when people were developing homes in, in areas, and they were circumvent and having to spend the money to develop it correctly, which in my opinion never happened, but it did. So therefore, you know, now you're coming back and saying you want city contribution to this. Now, I'm not saying for or against it, I'm just, just a reminder that if we do city contribution for this project, you're gonna have a lot of people coming to the city saying, how about me? We should be contributing to every undeveloped city street in Sweet Home, because if they want to do an LID, they're gonna expect us to pony up. So if we do, keep that in mind. So that's something to think about in this project.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to ask some clarifying questions on how does this initially get paid for, that one point six million dollars? I believe I understand, but I think it's just good to review that.
So how, how does it initially get paid for? Essentially, the way it would work, if the, if the council decides to move forward, staff would essentially obtain bonds to pay for this project. And then the, then the construction would start. Those bonds obviously have to be repaid, and during that repayment process, we would use this formula to assess those costs on all the properties within the local improvement district. So it's using the city's credit to borrow money, and then the residents would be paying that off with whatever city contribution was included.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. There, so I don't want people to think that I'm, I'm against this, because I'm really not. So we put the money in, and so do the people that are, are, have a home there. Are they gonna have to pay a monthly thing, or are they gonna be able to put that away for twenty years? Oh, whatever. No, you gave us the number. How, how does that exactly work?
So we're assuming a thirty year bond repayment, and I believe it would be annually or semiannually.
Right.
Semi, so every six months, there would be a payment that, that the property owner would pay to the city that would then go to the, to pay off the bonds.
I, I, okay, I understand that, but I don't know how many people are, they're not gonna be able to pay that. Because I would assume, and I don't take me wrong here, but I'm assuming there's some won't be able to do that because they're on limited incomes, and, and, and that, that might be a concern for them. But I mean, if you lean their property, it's gonna be whenever they
Right.
don't live there anymore, or sell, or whatever. So that's a concern for me, just a, a little bit of a concern. But oh, anyway, that's good.
Did, did you want a description of how the lien process works, or how that would?
No, I'm, I'm okay with that. Yeah, I'm okay with that. That's, I understand the lien process, so. Could be monthly, right? I mean, we haven't ruled out you have a monthly.
No, I mean, it's easiest, I believe. I'll let Brandon handle that question.
So real, realistically, we can, we can set up anything. If our loan payments are semi-monthly as we are currently planning, if this were to go through, then we would set up semi-monthly, basically billing reminders. Residents could pay on a semi-monthly basis every six months, but they would certainly be allowed to pay every month if that, if that was what they wanted. We have the flexibility with our existing accounting system to do whatever fits best for those residents.
I, I guess I have one question for Brandon. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. So we're gonna have to pay back the bond. We'll have to pay it back.
Yes.
So are we in a financial position to be able to do that with the one point three million or six, whatever it is, I don't know what the number is, a hundred percent.
Right. The, the short answer, I guess, would be yes. Because this is a water and a streets project, then we have some flexibility in how, in what resources we use as far as the city is concerned to make that semi-annual debt payment. It would come out of operations. So as far as, as the budget committee and, and the council are concerned, that would, that would be something we'd have to review in, in the future moving forward is, how are we going to make that debt payment? Is that going to impact our everyday operations? Yeah, and it depends on the funding source. Are we, would we have to look at, at rates for it? There, there are lots of variables, certainly.
So when we do a, a road project, and isn't, isn't it, is it usual that we, that the city will pay for part of that? I mean, is there, is there a so for instance, if it's, if it's a million dollars, does the city put money in toward that anyway? Or is it all on the, on the, the owners?
I think that, that depends on the council and the community. Cities do it every which way. There are cities that do contribute. There are cities that certainly say, if the residents want the LID, then, then that's where the, the cost is going to be born. It can vary, and, and again, I think it depends on what the council wants to do and what the community is asking for.
I think, I think a good example is the overlay project that, that the two overlays that were recently approved. Some of those, some parts of that overlay project are, are roads that were not entirely paved in the past. And, and so they, those were on the list for that project. A lot of times, cities will have projects like this that because they're in an area where most residents travel, you know, if you live on a street that a lot of people use to, to get from to different sides of the, parts of the city, a lot of times there will be public, public funded, public funding used for that project, and the, the residents along that street don't have to pay for it simply because so many people in the city use it. Unfortunately, this neighborhood doesn't have people traveling through it. It's more or less a cul-de-sac, and so they don't get the benefit of that. And then that could be one of justification for city participation is that in, in effect, you're, you're giving some, some funding toward folks that would not otherwise see it, whereas a different part of the city would see that support without having to pay for it on a per property basis.
Well, I, 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 I under, I understand that, and I also have the same concerns that the mayor has with the precedent of, of doing this for this street and that street, and then having somebody go down the road, and I'll give you another example of that. When we had a traffic committee, there was complaints on First Avenue, and they wanted to put speed bumps in. That was recommended by the traffic. So I was asking him, so are we gonna put speed bumps on Elm Street? Are we gonna put them on Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, Seventh, Eighth, Ninth, Tenth, all the way up to Fifty-Ninth? Is that what, because there are a lot of money? I don't know. That's just, I'm just, I'm a little bit concerned about that, but I'm not knocking having this done. I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying that, that it could be, it could be a, it could turn out to be a little bit of a problem, so, thanks.
Again, I want to say, send a presence here is my concern. But technically, we've already done that once already with some other streets in our town. So, you know, I, I, my only concern is never, if you, once you do it, don't sit there and tell, say no later on down the road with other citizens. That's not fair to other citizens. That's why there was one, I'm not gonna mention the street, but there's one street that I thought, I was shocked. The residents in that one street didn't come to the city and have a field day with us because we improved a street and we didn't do their street. And again, you set a presence, and you gotta be careful. So I'm, I like I say, I'm, I'm saying I'm for or against this. I'm just saying that's something to keep in the back of a mind. And, but once you do it, you can't be wishy-washy. You gotta do it. You gotta continue doing that for everybody in your community. You just can't go back and forth, so.
So I have two questions. The first one is, is my understanding that the existing fire hydrant is a considerable distance from this neighborhood, which is a huge liability. Insurance wise, fire wise, considering what's happening in our state. Second thing is, is I, I really don't have a lot of personal knowledge about liens. So if a person cannot afford this, we have a thirty year bond. Will they lose their home if they can't pay that? Does it only paid when it's sold? Does that have to be paid off before it's sold? What does that look like for the person that is stuck in that position?
My understanding is that it does, the city does have some flexibility. When you, when you have a situation like this and someone doesn't pay their bill for that assessment, there would be a series of, obviously, you'd have a warning, hey, this is, you know, this is paid due, and it goes through that typical process of giving a warning and then saying, okay, the balance is due, okay, your, your, your pass due. Once it gets to that point, the city can put a, a lien on the property for that amount. Now, that may be one year's worth of payments. It may be two years' worth of payments. At some point, it reaches a threshold where the city needs to decide whether it's going to foreclose or not. And so that would be the point where you would have someone, a possibility of someone losing their home is when the city forecloses. And Robert might be able to chime in on, on when that point would be. I, I, my understanding, Robert, is that there's some flexibility in when the city forecloses. Is that correct?
Sure, sure, but right in your statute, it says the city may proceed to foreclose on any lien to which it shall be entitled under this chapter thirty days after the same shall have been entered in the lien docket. And arrangements are not made for payment thereof or become delinquent as provided for foreclosure of liens in ORF, that's in that, chapter two twenty-three. I believe there is a, a, at least on a homestead, but I'd have to look at this specifically, but in, in some, in some ORFs, there's a three thousand dollar, somebody's gotta owe you at least three thousand dollars before you start a foreclosure on their homestead type of deal. But the foreclosure process is basically where you, 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 you take the, you're owed so much money, and you, and you take it, and you, you sell it, the, you know, the property, and you pay everybody off, and, and you go from there. So yeah, you can lose your home.
Just, just for some, some reference point real quick. There, the city has existing liens on homes that we don't necessarily see receipt of payment every month or every year on, and we have not foreclosed on those homes. The, the lien remains on the property until the property is sold, and it becomes due at that time as part of, of the closing transaction. We have a significant, I wouldn't say significant, we have several liens for old CDBG grants, for abatement circumstances, for SDCs, various liens out there that we have not foreclosed on to the, to date because it can be taken care of as part of the closing transaction and a sale, so.
And that's usually what, the way it gets paid is because somebody's selling it to the next person and the title company says, you've got a lien to clear off, and that's usually when they get cleared out.
And so one, one final thing on that, I, I haven't read it recently, but I do believe our, our ordinance allows senior citizens.
There is a section.
There's a section for senior citizens essentially to defer payment until their, their estate would take care of it, basically.
So there's, there's no fire hydrants in that area. They have wells that are going dry. And so that puts a larger burden upon the city if there is a fire down there in a bad time of the year. But when people have these kind of improvements in their street, what's the average value increase in each home? What is the, what is the person that has that home benefiting from this?
So the, we're, city staff aren't appraisers, so we
Okay.
we can't give you a, a value that way, but the best way, I think, to think of it is when you're shopping for a home, what does it mean to you that your home has water service as opposed to a well? What does it mean to you that your home has a paved street in front of it as opposed to gravel or, or some other level of, of street? That's really where the, the value comes, is that most people are, when it comes time to, to sell your home, most people are willing to pay more for a home that has these types of improvements. Putting, I, I, I would say that typically, from what I've seen, the value of, the actual cost of the improvements is lower than the added value to the property typically.
Well, I can tell you the value from, from a fire department's standpoint. When you have a fire engine that responds down there, and you don't have a hydrant, you got about four to five minutes of water, and you're done. That's it. Unless you have a tender or you have a hydrant, you're done. I remember one particular night, I pulled fire hose to almost two and a half city blocks to a house fire, and the house was gone, but then we got our waters set up. So there's value to a hydrant, and that's, anybody buying a home, that's gotta be a value. So I'm all, I'm, I'm gonna be always, because I'm biased to the fire department, I'm gonna be very advocating fire hydrants, but that's up to the homeowners if they wanna do that, but I believe you need to have your fire. That should be a priority in the city, in my opinion, but that's just me.
Mr. Mayor. If I might, there was a question about kind of the, the loan cost and whether this, you know, what the city would bear in that responsibility annually. We'd be looking at about seventy-one thousand five hundred dollars a year in loan payments for thirty years. Again, to come from a variety of funding sources potentially, depending on what the council and the budget committee decided, but about seventy-two, we'll say seventy-two for the sake of easy math, seventy-two thousand a year at today's rates.
Mr. Mayor, I've got one more comment about the fire hydrant. Joe, you might be able to tell me. When you're going, I don't know, but maybe, maybe you can tell me, I see that the, the fire hydrants, and there's some down on Nineteenth, but there's not, and there's one on Twentieth, but there's not one at the end on east of Yucca Street. Now, there's one out at the beginning, but it's six hundred and fifty feet away from the last house, I believe. Is that true, is that true?
One of David's on Eighteenth, that's the home I know down at Ford stops.
Yeah, I, there's one at the beginning of Yucca, I think. But then there's not one at the end, and I think the chief told me that it has to be within four hundred feet.
Yeah, there is one at the end, it's on the north side of.
Oh, it's not showing up on the map, Joe, that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, not existing, of course.
No, the last one is, the last one's down by Eighteenth.
No, 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 we're talking about, we're talking about the map, the proposed improvement. So Joe, does it? I'm not seeing a one on the end of Yucca.
So that one's proposed?
That's that's a fire hydrant.
Is it proposed or is it actual?
These these are all proposed. No.
Well, when you have to lay six hundred and fifty feet of hose, that ain't so good. So, but anyway, and getting wire water down, there's a big deal. Because usually, unfortunately, if you have to shuttle water back and forth or use a thousand feet of large diameter hose, it takes time and you and it's it's just not a very good situation. So, because they typically, they just burn down.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So Greg, if we were to approve this, we don't have the capacity to do this. This would be out, right? Contracted out?
That's correct. It would be designed outside and constructed outside of public works.
Okay. So I I feel like I'm between a rock and a hard place on this one. I've been complaining since I've been on council about the streets in that area. I feel the potholes are ridiculous and so forth and so on. On the other hand, I'm not happy about taking out a one point six million dollar bond. We've been talking about bonds and but I do understand that's the only way it's going to be financed if we decide to take a portion of this. I also worry about putting a burden of a hundred and fifty dollars a month on homeowners who may or may not need this. However, down the road, they may need it, the well may go dry, and then they're stuck. So it's kind of an iffy project. I I mean, I think the city should contribute to it. Twenty-eight percent, that's about what you're asking, right? Three hundred thousand?
That's twenty-eight percent of certain properties. As as I mentioned in the, there's a there's a a property owner that owns a number of many of the properties in this neighborhood that is foregoing that contribution. And so for those properties that would be receiving city help, it would be amount to twenty-eight percent for them, but for the others, it would be zero.
Well, city contributions to ninety-three.
A pro around that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I I do want to highlight the, at the top of that worksheet with all the costs, I believe that the bond rate says three and a half percent, and the loan period says twenty years. So if we go for a thirty on this, then these numbers do fall as far as what each of the property owners is responsible for on a monthly basis. And in today's market, we're not going to get anything near a three and a half. It'll be lower, much lower than that. So that does change the numbers for the better in this case. That it wouldn't be the hundred fifty dollars that the councillor Gerson just referenced, but just keep that in mind.
So so if it's not three and a half percent, what are you thinking?
Right now, with today's market, I I'm guessing about a one point nine percent bond rate.
So overall, we're looking at a hundred and fifty dollar bill going down to approximately a guesstimate twenty bucks, thirty bucks, fifty bucks. Because that matters to people. But the same thing is, and we bring ourselves to these positions. Last year, in the middle of the summer, I'm putting the sprinkler on my property because I'm worried, and if you don't have well water, you're not going to have that option.
So, for example, the pain with with the city partnership, if you had a property that was, for example, let's see, trying to pick a typical one. There's one that would be a hundred and thirteen dollars a month with the city contribution. That one, if you put the bond rate at one point nine percent and have it over thirty years, that property would be looking at a seventy-four dollars and seventy-five cents a month payment instead of hundred and thirteen sixty-nine.
So you're looking at about a thirty-five percent decrease in those monthly rates for each of those accounts.
Thank you.
We try, I I apologize. We try to be conservative on these estimates and build in some some wiggle wiggle room. But right now, yes, we have an unprecedented low amount or low rates that we could get.
Do we know what the average would be for people? What are we talking about? It's the average, I think.
Average cost?
Yes.
Overall, are we talking or you're talking on a monthly basis?
Medium, yeah, monthly. On the thirty with the one point nine.
Yeah, so if that.
About a hundred and twenty a month on an average.
Okay.
This is my guess, just real quick now.
Less than that, actually. Depends on, the problem is, there's a there's a wide variety of.
It's all over the spectrum.
It's all over the place. Now, average sixty-eight dollars a month for most. Some are are significantly lower than that because there's there's some properties that are just getting street improvements and are not getting, they already have water and so but they're 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 getting street improvements because they're on the way to this neighborhood, basically. And those would be lower, like eleven or eleven dollars a month for some of them. But, yeah, sixty-five bucks, maybe.
But you got properties there for a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty, sixty. So it's all respectable.
Mr. Mayor, but of course, on top of that, they have to pay a water bill and a sewer bill, right?
Well, they're they're paying the sewer bill already.
Pardon?
They're paying the sewer bill already because they already have sewer service.
Okay, they're not forced to hook up, though, are they?
The the sewer rate is based on, we don't, since there's no meter, the sewer rate is a flat rate. And depending on how much water they use, they could be looking at a reduction in their sewer rate. Because we usually try to aim high for the.
The sewer rate, the the they are likely currently paying is about is for six hundred cubic feet. So if they use anything less than six hundred cubic feet, the bill will come down.
Which that six hundred cubic feet is the average amount used per month?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I I I I really kind of agree with councillor Gerson that I you know, I I don't know how we we're talking about getting a bunch more money for some other projects and all this other things, and I just don't know how in the world we're going to pay for all this stuff at the end. I know I know Brandon's on top of this stuff, but you know what? We don't know what's going to happen in the next five years and stuff, and it really, it concerns me. You know, and I don't want to get us in a position where we're we're stuck. And then, you know, we can't, we can't pay for the bonds that we have and all those things, so it it that part concerns me too. So, and this place, this needs to be done at some point. I don't know if it's tomorrow, but anyway, that's that's I I agree with councillor Gerson on that, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I agree with Dave or councillor Trask when it comes to what the next five years is, but I would think my disagreement is probably going to be with, I'm more worried about the folks that are lived down there that are paying than the actual city. And I just, I don't know, I have a hard time swallowing this. I really do.
Yeah, me too.
I just, I I don't know why we let it happen this long, I guess. I I don't know the history down there or anything, but something has got to get fixed, but I definitely do not think the cost should be passed on to the homeowners. I think the city should have to pay more. I don't know if we need to do a bond or raise taxes or what to do, but we're looking to that.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I can fill you in a little bit on the history. And I think we touched on it a little bit in Blair's report. This is an area that was part of the county. And so it was built by county standards, which at that time we would guess didn't require asphalt. And of course, being in the county, they would have been part of of city services versus other places in town which were, just the developers were allowed to not put asphalt down, and I don't have any rhyme or reason or excuse to give you for that, so. Just to understand.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, Blair, do we, just for a little historical perspective on this, how long has this section been a part of the city?
I don't know the answer to that. Joe, do you have any ideas? Seventy-seven.
Fifty years, almost?
That was done the same as the Foster annex.
I believe it's probably done.
And the price is only going to go up.
And Joe, give me some history on why they have the sewer lines, but they didn't do the water at the same time.
The reason it's a sewer development area is because they included that with the Foster Midway District, which was based on the failure of septic tanks and drain fields that contaminated other neighbors' wells throughout Sweet Home, east of Clark Mill Road. And that same scenario happened in this area. And so it was all incorporated into the same very large project. At the time, I don't know the total cost of it, but at the time, they assigned a nominal per connection basis of nine hundred dollars to everybody who connected to that sewer line, and that was coming out of Oregon DEQ to do that. And so the annexation into the city allowed the development of those utility services to be made and with the grant money from DEQ, and probably a bit of city money, and certainly some local buy-in from all the owners that are receiving the benefit. So it, the reason there's no water there is because it was part of a different conceptual fix. It was a sewer-only fix. The piecemeal development of the east half of Sweet Home has incrementally built water throughout the the city, except that this neighborhood was already there. It was pretty densely populated, and there's been very few new places move in there, some land partitions to have capacity. But the water was not a part of the project. The 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 core design or the core concept was contaminated wells from the septic systems. And that just covered the whole thing.
This was done during the Foster annexation, same time.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, at this time, I'm going to let the public come up forth and give testimony, and I need your name and address, please, for the record.
I want to point out that those are not the only costs we're going to have because we have to run lines from the water system to our houses, which we've basically figured out to be about eight thousand dollars is what we're hearing. So that's really hard on all of us. Also, it's just, there's a lot of us that don't want it. There's one person down there that wants all of it, and the people that live in his houses aren't going to come in here and tell you guys they don't want it because they're renters. We're having, I don't know, I think it's personally, I think it's already decided because there's a bunch of trailers set up across from our house on Yucca that don't have water, and they're already sitting up there waiting for water. So I think that's a little fishy, and I don't know what's going on here, but I'm a little perturbed, and none of us can afford it down there. A bunch of us are getting ready to retire, and with the extra cost to hook up to the system and everything, it's really hard on a lot of us, and that's just the point I want to make. Thank you, guys.
Good evening. Name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Carmen Espinoza, and I live at two zero zero nine Eighteenth Avenue. First off, I want to just say that it's a very small neighborhood, and it is a very crowded neighborhood, and it's populated by a lot of elderly people and a lot of very low-income people. I went around this last couple of weeks, and I spoke with some of those people, and some of them are living in little lots, okay, because they've got houses that are sharing wells. And I spoke with them, and they say they can't come up here and say that they'd rather be on well water because they are renting, and they can't afford to move anywhere else. So they're pretty much stuck. And they're not going to say anything. They're just going to keep quiet. Fine, I understand. We need the water. We need to be able to get the fire trucks and put out the fires. I understand that. We do not need new sidewalks. People cannot afford to pay for extra sidewalks. We do not need luxuries. We're poor. Okay, we are the, we are I count myself as part of them because I moved over there because I'm going to retire, and I don't want a big giant bill. I don't want to have to worry about whether or not I'm going to be able to make my bills. I've got it all set up. I've got it all planned out. I don't need the water. I don't need the sidewalks. To me, they have zero value. I know that some of my neighbors do, but it's not because not because they need them, because they're investors. And they're making money off of my hard-earned money. And they're going to be making money out of this council's hard-earned money. Because they're the ones that are going to be benefiting from this, not the regular people. Okay, and so I just want to say that I don't think we need everything that's being proposed. I do believe that we need the water. Okay, and I do believe that some of those, it's not the people's fault that somebody is and there's not, not to say being greedy, but being ambitious and just accumulating all these homes and these little, little lots and putting it all into one well, it is not those people's fault. It is the person who put those houses on there that is at fault. And he should have thought about this before he did that, and put those people in this position, and put all of you guys in this position, and the rest of us in this position. And I'm just very unhappy with this, and I just wanted to let you guys know about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is David Jones. I am eighteen oh three Yucca Street. All the time that we have lived, it's approximately five years or so. I've never had an issue with my well going dry, and my septic system is very efficient. When you guys were talking about the need for hydrants, the interesting thing is across the street from me now is a whole bunch of very old double whites, and they're very close together. And I mean, really close together. So I can understand somebody's going to need to get some hydrants down there. Because if one of those things go, that whole place is gone. I don't see how the fire department could respond fast enough because we all have seen these kind of things catch fire, and it's it's really ugly. I'm getting ready to retire, so I'm really against having to put out monies for somebody else's stuff. Ultimately, is what it comes down to. I mean, I feel like, being as I have a large chunk of land, I'm getting banged for a whole bunch of this bill, and I don't need any of the services. And so it angers me a great deal. I just don't understand how everything works, you know, but like has been said, it's kind of interesting that this thing is coming to a vote, yet a whole bunch of houses have been placed, and it's like, okay, what the heck? I it I didn't even occur to me when they were going in there. And then I started realizing that they're so close, there's no way you could have a well or a septic system in between any of those houses. It just doesn't work. There's not enough space. So if this system didn't get activated, I see somebody is going to be in a very hurt spot. I mean, they put a lot of time and money into some stuff, but it just seems like it was a little premature. I don't know. And and it makes me feel like then now the burden comes down on us, and I don't know. I just vehemently disagree, and that's all I got to say. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you for coming this evening. Anybody else who'd like to come forth, be heard? Okay, try to keep it, keep it till at least three, four minutes, please.
Okay, so my name is Josh Victor. I live at four four zero zero four Wiley Creek in Sweet Home. So first of all, just to answer the people, the two houses that have the great wells down at the end of the street. Well, if this doesn't go through, there is going to be three more wells getting punched in, which is my right as a lot owner, right across from them. So if those wells do start getting taxed with more houses, who's to say whether those wells are still going to be good or not? Because that's my right, just like anybody else's. And like you guys, I already know because I have all the houses down there that have the wells that go dry. And I help all my neighbors that have their wells that go dry. I don't know if they talked to the old man on the corner of Nineteenth and Willow that his well goes dry, that I go and pump water to him, or the people down at the end of Willow Street who have no water that I pump water to. Yeah, I guess it's no worries for people that have water, but this is a problem for everybody else. And as far as I've heard some other mentions and mention about the city contributing, I think it comes to about eighteen percent of the total cost of this project if the city was to contribute this. I think if the other city streets and people say like, hey, we would like to redo our streets, and we're going to come up with eighty percent, I think that would be a great thing for the city, and I think the city should look at that as a positive, not a negative thing to contribute. They should look at it as like we're developing our city, and the residents are putting in the bulk of this money to do it. Like, let's try to help them out and make this area better. A lot of people don't remember Long Street without sidewalks, and I'm sure if anyone walks down Long Street now, they probably pretty much love walking on sidewalk. And at that same time, there was a lot of people that weren't happy to pay those contributions for sidewalks or for any of those developments. But I think as now, it's a given when you walk down Long Street how much that benefits our city. There's a huge mill district that's getting ready to be, well, hopefully, will be developed down in that area. All those, do you want, all the people walking down to Jamboree and all these people walking on those streets or on nice sidewalk streets with paved streets and saying like, wow, look at this nice town? Or walking in that area and being like, oh, it's kind of rough. You know, I mean, there is a lot of, so like I said, I think the contribution, I think that city should see that as a great thing. If you were to offer eighteen percent of everybody's that wanted to redo their streets, I think that would be a good thing for one. Next, I'm just, if I can clarify, I think I heard that that means we'd get hydrants down there. And that means we'd have water down there. We'd have streets and sidewalks. I think I heard that they said that we're going to foreclose on properties that had liens. So even if people didn't make their payments on it, that really wouldn't be something that they're saying they're going to foreclose on. So I don't really see that part of the issue, I guess, as far as being so worrisome if they say, well, we can forego it until that property transfers or you sell it, which both of them have very large properties that could be transferred or is broken into eight properties, both of them, and sold for a large sum in the future with streets and sidewalks, which if they don't, that's great. But they're not going to give it foreclosed on until afterwards. Well, if somebody else wants to buy it later on in the road, I mean, I think they would be happy to pay that if they're getting that big of a, an improvement, personally. Okay, I think that the more that the city streets improve, I think it is better for all the residents, like throughout everywhere. So like I said, I still see that as a, as a, as an added thing instead of a negative. And I'd actually, I agree with Councilor Dylan, too. I think if the city was going to throw more money, I think that would be a great idea. I think if they wanted to save it, and I would even defer even more. I am the one that deferred all mine, like all, everything. I didn't take any contributions that I can knock down everybody else's that's there. And I think that's something you're not going to find when you're going to do a lot of these improvements, and you're going to try to get eighty percent. You're not going to say like, three people say, well, I'm just going to waive the city contributions and give it to these people. And if they do, I feel like that's speaking to our community, and that's even better. You know, if someone on that street is waving, will say like, hey, let's, let me give mine to Joe over here. And two or three people say, we really want to get the street done, take our money and give it to them, that's even better, too. And I think, like I said, that would just speak to our community. So I think that's a benefit. Value of homes versus value of homes without sidewalks and streets, I can tell you what the value is. What's the value of a home that doesn't have water? What's the value of a home that like is literally having cars bouncing up and down the streets every time that they're driving by? Are kids walking in lines down the middle of the streets while cars are speeding by? What's the value of that? I mean, what's one kid get hit? How much is that? You know, versus walking on a sidewalk, which, as we know, kids will walk on sidewalks a lot more than if there is none. And then where's the rules? Where's the boundaries? You know, and I'm, I do have a lot of houses in that area, most of them, to be honest. But it's not just for me that I want like all of this. This is for everybody down in that area. And I get that a lot of people, some people, not a lot, maybe two or three, aren't happy with it. And I do really, like I said, I tried to give whatever I could to help to contribute to ease that possibility. And who knows, maybe the city can get a grant or something in the future to knock that down even more or something. I don't know. But I think the, the option to get someone that's got as much property in one given area like I do to develop it, I mean, I'm taking on over five hundred and sixty thousand of the one point six million here. You know what I mean? And that's a lot. So when I hear of somebody saying like, oh, I don't want to pay seventy dollars a month, I'm paying thousands, thousands a month.
Okay, no interruption. Sorry, I had your chance to speak, and go ahead and wrap this up.
But so, like I said, I am contributing literally over a third of the cost on it. So, and I am, it's not for, it's not making me money to do it. It's taking money out from me to do it. But it's to make everybody's life in that area better. And I think it will, and overall, maybe not for the first year or a couple of years, my, you know, people might not be happy, but I think once they start walking on sidewalks and having kids or grandkids that are using the streets to go to the park and the sidewalks, I mean, I think that will come over time. And like I said, I would really like to see it done. I'm, it's coming into dry season again. I've already been pumping water down to that area. And like I said, I know that's not anybody else's problem other than mine and all the people that live there and all the neighbors of the houses that I don't own. But I do that because that's what you do in a neighborhood that has this kind of problem. So like I said, and to me, if you're going to do all this and just do the water and not do the streets and sidewalks, and don't do none of it, because it's, that's, you're going to, you're going to be there. You're doing all this. Make it nice all the way, not just halfway, so.
I got a question. Is, can any of these people refuse to get the water?
So we're going to dive into civics class a little bit. The whole reason that we incorporate is for these services. The whole, we have cities, towns, municipalities, parishes, wherever you want to call them throughout the country, is to pool money and resources together to provide water, sewer, streets, those types of things that make a community a community as far as infrastructure goes and parks. Robert can correct me, but I believe if the council were to pass this, every property owner listed would be responsible legally and would not have the ability to opt out.
Just so you're clear on, if we pass this, each property owner will owe the money. That's one issue. That's what we're answering here, not whether they have to hook up or not. I don't, it doesn't follow that they have to hook up if they want to use, keep using well water. This doesn't have in it that they have to hook up. It just has in it that they have to pay for this because it's an LID. Have to pay their share, whether, and, and with it goes, doesn't go, it's order I'm against it. If it passes, then that's why, that's why you put a assessment on it, and that's why there's a lien, and that's why those, those things are there because that's the way it worked.
If, would the city have the ability to just answer, kind of to go along to that, to say, put something in? So that way it eliminate the whole idea of people losing their houses to say something that they weren't going to be foreclosed on based on the cost of this? It would just be added to the end with interest or something?
Well, one is you'd have to, you, you, I, I believe you can do it any way you want, but you'd have to, it would be an ordinance change if you, if you did. I mean, it would be, you'd have to think about it a while. It's one thing to put it down and, and change it off of here because certain properties and certain things may change. You may not want to, you may just, like Brandon said, wait, but then there's maybe a time when you don't want to wait and don't, shouldn't wait for whatever good reasons you had.
Anybody else would like to come forth before council be heard? Name and address, please, sir.
Thank you, Councilor. My name is James Maline, eighteen zero five Willow Street. First of all, thank you, Mayor and City Council, for just listening to a really complicated and challenging task. Thank you, Director Larson and your staff, for putting in an enormous amount of effort into all the research and number crunching and design and redesign. I want to thank council for seeing that the first plan was too high for the local residents and too high for the city. I appreciate, you know, Director Larson coming back with a more reasonable approach. And I really think, I don't know what your name is, but the Northern Investment Guy for contributing, you know, to a third of this project. We've been here before. If you recall, we were supposed to have a huge developer come in, I don't know, what, twelve years ago? Former counselor Jim, you know, worked hard to try and get that developer in there. Previous city manager tried hard to get that developer in there. And that developer was going to be the one that brought these very needed city services to that community. And because of the recession, it, it fell apart. We have an, we have a opportunity here that I don't know is going to come again. We have a developer here that is saying, I will pay a third of the cost of this. We have been living for fifty years paying city property taxes without city infrastructure. So yes, we have sewer, and I appreciate that. However, to have kids playing in gravel is not a really great livability type of place to be. To have children and families and seniors trying to navigate on gravel. I have a neighbor who is disabled, and that person is in a wheelchair trying to navigate down gravel with large potholes. And I'm not saying anything about the potholes because they can be fixed. I'm not dogging on you, Director. However, yes, I was just going to say, however, like, it's a heavily traveled roads, heavily. Look at the, look at the density of this. We're talking of a highly dense area with lots of traffic. And if you look at any of the homes in that area, oftentimes they have two or three cars, right? And so trying to keep up with the gravel and the potholes and all of that is really challenging. This is a livability issue. This is an equity issue. And, and, and Mayor, I totally agree with you. I understand. We don't want to cause a slippery slope where every other undeveloped area just starts, you know, asking for more. However, this neighborhood reached out to you. This neighborhood asked Director Larson for the LID. This neighborhood, it wasn't council that brought this to the table. It was the neighborhood. The neighborhood asked for this. And I know that not everybody agrees, and I do, I do feel for those that can't afford to pay. And I really do implore Finance Director, don't foreclose, put it on a lien. And yes, that, that does take away from their ability to have a greater take-home at the sale of the property or the state sale. But at the same time, I feel like this is like a recipe, right? And we're baking an incredible meal here, incredible cake, and we're bringing together ingredients to get, to together from a variety of revenue sources, a variety of options that I don't know they're going to come again, right? The other piece is, I really recommend, you know, Counselor, I, I understand your, your concern about construction costs, right? And the city, the city taking on a really large burden. However, our construction costs, if you've noticed, are going up seven percent a year, eleven percent a year. It's really important that we lock in those construction costs now, today, at, you know, one point nine percent. It's, it's a great investment to lock in for a few, to kind of future-proof it. I would just implore you, we're already paying property taxes. Let's have the benefits of modern infrastructure. This is going to be an incredible asset to Sweet Home, a very incredible asset to this community. And, and, oh, water, good Lord, whenever there's a power outage, we have no water. Whenever the well goes dry, which is every year, we have no water, right? So these are really important aspects, and I know it's our, you know, issue, right? It's our well, right? But at the same time, drilling another deeper well is really expensive. The other piece is, if we do this, it will make it so that it's easier to refinance. Our insurance already told us that we're paying more because of the, I forgot what it's called, the ICM. Yes, I though, I, our ISO number is higher because the hydrant is hundreds and hundreds of feet away. So we're going to have a reduction in ISO costs, a reduction in insurance, I hope. We're not going to be paying the electricity for the well. We're not going to be hauling in water. I mean, there's a variety of savings that we'll have. And good Lord, to have an, an investor who is saying, I'll pay a third of it, is just really incredible. I do recommend monthly payments, though. I know that you talked about six-month payments. The problem is it's too hard on low-income families. I know this is like, you know, it doesn't make, you know, it's counterintuitive, but monthly payments are so much more important than asking somebody to save up every six months to, for a big payment. So I know it's a bigger administrative burden on you, but I would recommend monthly payments. And then, oh, last thing, landlords. Landlords can only raise rent approximately because there's a, there's a cap that the state now requires. So landlords, yes, they might be able to pass the cost on to some of the renters. However, they're going to be absorbing part of this. The renter's going to be absorbing part of this. The city is absorbing part of this. The investor back there, he's absorbing a gargantuan amount of this, right? So it's like, we're all putting in together to better this neighborhood, and I just really implore you to, to make it happen. Otherwise, we're going to be here again in fifty years from now, okay, with much higher costs. Any questions for me?
Well, thank you for coming this evening and your, your feedback. Fairly appreciated. I do have one question for Joe, just as a clarification because, because of talking about setting the precedence, but I think there's a little bit of two different things going here. Back in, because this has been a source of sour subject with me personally in a way because you've got undeveloped streets in Sweet Home where you had contractors who built homes, and they circumvented the system so they didn't have to put streets and so forth in, so that saved money so they can develop and make money and make more money and go on and on, back in the day, right? Now you have the annex situation in Foster, and in my opinion, Foster's, it's kind of been like the stepchild nobody wanted in the years with the annexation because they brought it in for the taxation purpose, but they didn't get all of the city benefits, in my opinion, with the annexation, okay? It's just an opinion. So in my, this is a little different than, than undeveloped streets. This was kind of a area where they developed, they brought in because of the annexation, they kind of got forced with the sewer, and they didn't get all the city services that they should have been afforded. Is that correct?
Yes, the annexation was just purely property in order to be able to get the federal grant, the state and federal grant monies. And yes, the Foster District had a water line built, and it only went into the north of Main Street. It didn't even go into the south side of Main Street in Foster District. And I'm not sure why. I really don't know why. That was in the eighties. But, but yes, because of the annexation of, of unimproved streets, which are turnpike style, it's called. It's called county road style. It's phenomenally, it is expensive, no matter when you do it, whether it's thirty or forty years ago or certainly from now on. And so there wasn't, I say, there, there either wasn't the impetus or there wasn't the ability to improve that, that area that was brought in. And so there's large swaths of roadways that were unimproved. And yes, the contractors opted out to not infill with sidewalks along roadways, like in subdivisions. Because you incrementally built drainage systems and sidewalks. And then another hundred and fifty feet down the street, you might have another one. Or midway between the two, you'd have somebody across the street. And it's hard to link all that together. A more sophisticated, although it's not, anyway, a more sophisticated, sophisticated transportation plan could have taken all of those streets, laid them out intersection to intersection with design grade. And then every development property along the way fills in their piece of the pie, so to speak. But that didn't happen and, yeah. And so there are things like the non-remunstances or development agreements in the reverse. And it's just hard to implement trying to get all of that incrementally, piece by piece, across the east half of town. And short of a subdivision standard where it's required, everything is piece by piece. Short of local improvement districts that, for example, built Twelfth Avenue from, I believe it went, yes, from Nandina down to Tamarack. That was a local improvement district. The, it would still be a roadside ditch, small street. Twenty-eighth Avenue was a local improvement district. The, unless they're built with the cooperation of everybody who lives there, it typically just doesn't happen.
Okay. Thank you. I was clarifying. Any, anybody else to come forth if you want to be heard for Council? Okay, at this time, I will leave it one more time up for the Council for discussion or rebuttal.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. I just want to say thank you to the gentleman who pointed out that we need to secure construction cost and make sure we get a loan so we don't have those construction costs sky high. I have been trying for months to secure a loan on this council to better the entire town in Sweet Home. And if you're only going to consider a loan for these people and put the burden on the backs of these people while not doing greater good for the entire community with the loan I've been proposing for months, I think that's a huge disservice to these residents and the people of this town. I think that if we were able to get some sort of loan and save all of this money, we could possibly give them more money to their lid and not put this burden on their back. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, um, kind of quick, quick comment, but I just want to say you hit the nail on the head there, Ange, or Counselor Sanchez. Thank you.
Well, I was just thinking, I'd like to understand the difference between the bond that's being referred to and the loans that were discussed earlier, since this has been brought up. But I also did a brief count of about twenty other individual property owners that we haven't heard from. And that's disheartening to me because I would have loved to hear from those twenty other property owners personally. But Brandon, if you could clarify the difference, please.
Yeah, I don't. The previous conversations that have occurred at Council surrounding obtaining a loan to complete construction projects, that conversation has been based on obtaining enough dollars to meet what our capital improvement plan is at this point in time. The, the same question, I think, would come back around of, I don't think it would matter if we just got this loan, this, this bond for this community, this, the section of the community. Or if we got a, a bigger bond, the interest rate would remain the same. And the same question of would there be a contribution of what size? What kind of contribution would come from the city? I don't know the, I can say that getting a bigger bond wouldn't help in this scenario tonight. It wouldn't change anything about the conversation anyways.
And there's a difference in how the bond is paid back and how a loan is paid back. Because of where the money is.
Not necessarily, there's no difference in how they're paid back necessarily, but
Except this involves water.
Yeah, I, I think it comes down to you have different funding sources. So in this case, this one involves water and streets for this LID. And so the, the, the assumption would be the, the water fund and the street fund would pick up the tab as, while we were going through this process for thirty years. The, the difference really between a loan and a bond, loans are going to be higher interest rates. Bonds are sold on an open market, are much more competitive. That's what we're going to, that's what we would do in this scenario if this is approved by the Council. Obtaining a loan is certainly going to come with a higher interest rate because usually they are either bank backed or not sold on an open market.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
So, so I don't know what the number is you're looking for, but in a few months or possibly a year, we may be borrowing or getting it, hopefully get a grant from the state or the feds or whoever. But we might be spending tens of millions of dollars on a wastewater plant. Where are we going to get that money? Where are we going to get it? Are we going to look, get another loan and be spending half a million dollars every year? I don't know. But we could, we could be in deep trouble again if we don't, if we don't, we have to be pretty conservative, which everybody knows I am. But with that up in the air, how are we going to, how are we going to make that happen? You know, I, I don't know. I mean, we could, we could, if we don't get the seven million from the state, which they say they're going to, and if they don't give us another grant later on for that wastewater plant, we could be in a hole for fifteen million dollars. And where's that going to come from? And how are we going to pay it?
So the wastewater funding for the wastewater project is a, is a different animal.
I understand that, but it's still going to be a loan, possibly.
It will be, it will be a loan. At this point, the plan is from USDA in the total of approximately twelve million dollars. I don't have concrete figures yet because the plan is still being developed. But we're assuming about twelve million dollars in wastewater debt that the city will incur. Right, if the, if there is seven million in, in grant funds from the state.
And if we, if we don't have the money, however, we thought we'd be able to, to have out of our money to, to help with that.
I would add that those are completely different funding sources from this conversation today. Given that all of that wastewater money takes place, we've got the, the sewer money set aside for our contribution. And the sewers, the sewer rates, the rates that folks pay in the community for sewer would back that loan from USDA. So separate, separate. In this case, I, I wouldn't say that they're the same in that we've already secured, we're ready for that process. The, our, our rate structure is solid enough for that process. We, we feel like that, that's a foregone conclusion at this point, given how far along in the process we are.
Okay.
So I, I, I really don't want to go down this rabbit hole because to me it's, it's a bigger picture and it's kind of outside the scope of this question. But I, I want to ask you a question. So as we do these projects, because I kind of want to lay this to rest, as we do these projects, the city has, we frequently get grants and we frequently look for other monies. If we were to take out a big loan, would we still have access to all of those grants that we would be able to apply at the time that would have nothing to do with this project?
I, I think, short, yes, because we could potentially obtain a grant to cover a project that hasn't been completed. Typically, if you've completed a project, no, you're done. You can't go back for a grant.
And so if we've already taken out the loan money and decided to do that in the long run and incrementally taking care of this business, we wouldn't have access to grants if those have already been
Once the project is complete, you would close the door on the grants.
Okay, so we would just be out that money.
Correct.
So, thank you.
Is there any ratio on debt to income of this?
Uh, I don't have a number that, I, I don't have a number off the top of my head as to what kind of the best practice is as far as what a municipal debt to income ratio is. Right now, with the assumption that, that we will incur the debt for the wastewater treatment plant, the city is going to be looking at probably a thirty-three, somewhere thirty-five percent debt to income ratio. It is high.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, we have a member of the community online that we'd like to unmute to hear. Yeah, yeah.
I'm on it. He should be able to unmute his own mic. There he is.
Okay, good afternoon. This is Douglas Hefman. I'm at Two Thousand Eighteenth Avenue. I won't speak to whatever one else is who basically has been against the project. I agree with them wholeheartedly, especially coming out of this pandemic. And the financial burden that's put on a lot of us. I've been in Oregon for twelve years now, I believe it is. And I still haven't figured out this tax structure here. It just confounds me. Back home in Tennessee, it was like you had city taxes, you had county property taxes and it paid for everything. So for the city to have collected property taxes for forty-four years and not improve this area, I don't understand that. I think the city should either pay for the whole thing or kill the project. Thank you.
Thank you for that reply. Any other comments?
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I, can anyone answer for me how much it costs to drill a well? Eight to ten?
Yeah, we, we got an estimate for some property about two years ago and it was between, it's a little bit higher. It was between twelve and fourteen thousand, depending on the depth.
So, so potentially some of these, if some of these wells went dry, what they, what homeowners would initially be paying for this development would be what it would cost to drill a new well approximately. And looking at these figures, am I correct in saying that?
Yes, I, I, I realized because you have a big piece of property, but I'm, I'm just looking at some of these properties that, that we're talking about.
That would, that would depend on if there was water on their property. There's no guarantee there's water on their property.
Right, right, okay. I, I got that. So Brandon, I just have one more question. You, you figured that this loan would cost us approximately seventy-two thousand dollars a year?
Yes.
What, currently, what are we paying in debt?
Uh, I can answer that. Maybe I can answer that. So our fiscal year twenty twenty-two debt payments are estimated to be seven hundred sixty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars.
Not including this seventy-two thousand.
Right. I will say that, that over the next two years, we anticipate that low of payment. But I do anticipate that in twenty twenty-four, we're going to jump up to about one point five million. Once the, once we reap the benefits of our recent bond refinancing.
Okay, thank you.
Just the city's portion or is it include everything?
That's everything. So I took the, the, the total project cost, uh, the one point six million dollars for the, the overall project, assumed a one point nine percent interest rate for thirty years. I can figure that, the, the biggest thing that the city has to consider is that regardless of payments made or not made, we are on the hook for that annual amount. Hopefully, yes. Right. Yes. And I, and I think there's, there's a lot of assumptions being made there certainly because there is room for, if the city decides to front their, the three hundred thousand that is currently being proposed out of existing funds, then that three hundred thousand could be taken care of right off the top and not incur additional interest costs, which then is less that we have to spread certainly to, to residents in that regard. There are a lot of assumptions and a lot of variables in this, as far as what the final thing would come out looking like. But yes, on a, on a broad base.
Any other questions? I got one more comment. It's just like some of the other things we talked about, there's a lot of what ifs there. What if this happens? What if that happens? What if that doesn't happen?
Sure.
It really concerns me if we're going to do more than we can afford.
I, I would certainly say that as with all of the, the conversations that this Council and, and staff has had surrounding debt options, you, once this, once this bond is taken, you are stuck with it for a period of time. There is no getting rid of it. It is, it becomes the thing you pay first and everything else as far as operating happens after. It's with any debt. And, and I would say the same thing for the wastewater treatment plant. I would say the same thing for the water treatment plant that we built that we're still paying on. You know, it's, it's just, that's the nature of debt.
But it, do we have a responsibility to our community members who do not have access, who live in the city limits, who do not have access to water? What is the infrastructure responsibility that we have? So that's my concern. We have people who are paying city taxes. They don't have access to a fire hydrant, who don't have access to water, who don't have access to the ability to pave their streets. There, there's a problem there and we have to figure out how to fix it. You can't just say, no, let's not vote on this again. We have to figure out some way to help and because these people live in our town. And we, come on, they can flush their toilets, but they have to have water.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I agree with you, Counselor Gorley. I, I know we all have wrestled with this because there's so many tentacles to this. And, but I agree that we have a responsibility that we need to live up to, I believe.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the gentleman just gave testimony that we've been receiving property taxes for forty-four years and we're not putting all of that back into this community. So if there is a responsibility, it shouldn't be on these residents' back, it should be on ours. Brandon, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Brandon, I guess. Or maybe it's Director Springman. How many homes don't have improved streets or water coming to them, which we would then need to pay for every one of them if we paid for all of these as well?
I don't know that specific number. I know just from personal experience, there are some going out Clark Mill that, that don't have water service. I, I'm currently going through that myself. There are, there are some homes inside Sweet Home that, that have wells, existing wells, and have not chosen, not because they don't have the option, but just have chosen not to connect to the city water. And at this point, the council has.
If we paid for them, would they pay for it all? Would they be willing to join on or join the bandwagon?
If the city paid for it all?
Yes, the city.
I, I can't speak for everybody. I can say that from my standpoint, if the city wanted to pay for my hookup, I'd say, yeah. But I, I can't, I can't pursue, I can't assume what, what others might say.
Mr. Mayor, while we're waiting for him, could I clarify something? When you pay property tax, none of that money goes towards water service. Your water service is an enterprise fund. The fees collected from your use of water pay for the water or service. Your property taxes, I'm not going to say never, but rarely if ever probably have ever gone towards streets or sidewalks.
I, I would say, just to kind of, to help in that, I think the conversation there is, there is a finite resource, a finite amount of money that, that comes in from property taxes. And the, the, for fifty years, the Budget Committee, a, a citizen body, and the City Council have decided that the money that comes in from property taxes goes to cover the items in the general fund, court, parks, community and economic development, and that's it, because there is nothing left. And then there's, there is a separate property tax rate to cover just the police department and just the library. So that's for fifty years, that committee and the, the, the City Council with citizen input have said that's the priority.
So property taxes have gone towards administration for the most part, a few other things, but not, not capital in Sweet Home. And I would also remind you, we have the third lowest permanent rate in the state of Oregon, I believe, at a dollar forty-one, forty, dollar forty-one per thousand.
And the other thing you have to remember is, is these places that do have the infrastructure, it was put in with the subdivision and the people paid it at the time in the, in the price of the house.
Okay, so my question was, the, the water in the sewer in the streets come to our neighborhood. I was very unclear if we actually have an option of hooking up to the sewer and the water, and if we don't, what is the average cost? I mean, yeah, there's an initial cost, and I understand that's, that's steep. But then is there any average cost of water and sewer in this city?
Yeah, so I think we tried to clarify you would not be required to hook up to.
Well, what we're talking here.
Right.
It doesn't require you to hook up the city water.
Correct.
But it does require you to make, an LID does require you to make that payment every month to pay back the LID, pay back the bond, which is totally different animal.
If the, if the, if the residents in the area chose to connect to the city water at that time, forty-five-ish percent of our, of our residential homes pay sixty-eight dollars, I think, about sixty-eight dollars a month for water, sewer, and stormwater. The average consumption, six hundred cubic feet, you're looking at about a hundred and eighteen dollars a month, if you use six hundred cubic feet of water, which is not.
Four acres and you need to irrigate?
Well, irrigation certainly.
You wouldn't want to use it for irrigation.
No.
And I, I should, I should add, no, there's nothing here that if, if the resident decides to connect to city water, doesn't mean they have to ditch the well. They can still use the well for irrigation purposes if they so chose. And again, they are not required at that point to connect to the city water either.
I, I understand. Good. Then I would at least have the option of not having to hook up to these services and, and be spared that much extra monies out. All that I'm going to be required to do then is help the other guys get their houses watered and that's, I guess, ultimately what it still kind of comes down to is I don't understand. Can we alter the rate? Just because I have property, I, I chose a chunk of property, so I didn't have neighbors. Now I don't have a choice. There's a lot of them, but I feel like I'm still paying for that instead of my intent or my desire. Much, you know, just to have elbow room so I can grow my garden, you know, run my dogs. But it still seems like I'm, we're gonna, there's at least two of us that are going to be on the hook, more so than anybody else, is if there was any way we could screw those numbers around a little bit, you know, level that part out. All I'm saying is that there might be a little bit less resistance.
If I might make one point of clarification, the, the costs built into this assumption for the water portion of this project specifically are split equally amongst all of the homes. So it's not based on square footage or frontage or anything else like that. It's just an equal amount to each.
The LID right on that piece, it tells me how much more I'm paying than anybody else, and I don't want any of the services.
Right.
That's what I'm getting at. The water is irrelevant. Ultimately, it's just that.
Sure, I'm just saying the streets is the component that, that changes based on the square footage. Everybody's paying, in this assumption, everybody's paying the same amount. If we just were to do only the water, everybody, every house down there would pay the same amount.
I guess I'm still confused. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Since this is a public hearing that basically comes out of the pattern after the ordinance, it did say if you have any objections, please come. So I'd like it to.
This, this wasn't a public hearing, though. This was technically the way it's written here tonight is a request for council action.
Well.
We have, I'm just.
It was advertised in the paper, the public hearing.
Well, then it needed to be in my council package as a public hearing, then we needed to do a different.
Well, it, it's not a, it's not a land use public hearing. So it is, it is a hearing. It's, it, but even when you have a, even when you have a public hearing, you would have an RCA. You would just have the public hearing as well. The difference is it's not a land use.
Okay, I'm just saying, that's not clarified.
My apologies.
Go ahead. I, I'm sorry. I'm just saying, it's, it's phrased that way in here, and I would just like it, that there be an opportunity for anybody that does object to have everything that they want to say, said within the time limit. If they, like, have anything else.
Okay, I will go ahead and put it out. Any rebuttal, anybody that has anything against us, can please come forth and bring it up? This is time for rebuttal. Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. So, councilors.
Two zero nine eighteenth Avenue. I just wanted to say that I'm all heavily said that it's even for the water, and, and I do feel that, you know, there's water need. Some people say, well, just disregard, if you're not going to do the sidewalks, just disregard the project altogether, but the waters need it, waters need it. Sidewalks can wait. I don't want to pay for sidewalks. I do not want to pay for sidewalks. I will pay for the water for my neighbors to be able to put their fires out, to be able to drink water, take a shower, do whatever they need to do, because that is necessary for life. But a sidewalk is not. Thank you.
If I, Josh Victor again. If I understand correctly, there was an LID that went down this direction a few years back, and several of the homes opted to not do sidewalks. I thought the same thing, like, let's just wait till later on down on Vine Street, I believe. And so they connected water down there and down U-Lux and the other, and there's still no sidewalks there. That was maybe twenty years ago. And that thought is tends to be how it is, is like, oh, let's wait till later, but who's going to want to initiate and do all that later on? And that's the thing is, it's not an easy task. None of this was easy to do. It's taken a long time. This has been going for, I've been talking to Robert, what, three years probably on this, I would say? It's not a, this isn't a fast thing, and it's been coming for a long time. But like I said, so to just say like, oh, let's just wait off on this or wait off on that, like, that's, like I said, I don't see that as in the best interest of our area. I do like the fact, like I said, if she, they say if you guys can move some numbers to help them out or something, great, you know what I mean? That's awesome. I do feel for them. But I don't think that that's in the best interest of the whole area for those two, and I do, but I do think that, like I said, if there's something that can be done to help accommodate, I think that would be great, because the reason there's, you said there's twenty other people's names on that list. I spoke to all those people. I have them, a lot of them on their signatures right with Robert, and that's why they're not coming to this. I mean, they've been wanting to, wondering why this hasn't been happening in the last two years. You know what I mean? So just, I mean, I know that we hear the negative side, but there is this, a lot of people that have came to these other meetings saying like, hey, man, let's do it, so.
He's talking about improving the neighborhood by putting water and sidewalks in, but there's ancient trailers that just went across the street that are going to depreciate the rest of our houses down there. I know it's not a good neighborhood to start with, but it's getting worse because these houses are probably older than the seventies. I don't know. They're terrible. So that's a point I'm going to make on that part, too. I know it has nothing to do with the water and stuff, but it's not going to appreciate our neighborhood because of the other things coming in. Thank you.
Any other rebuttal or any other questions? Okay. At this time, I need a council directive. If I don't have a council directive, this, as a reminder of the council, this does not put the LID as a dead-on rival. That means that you go back to the drawing board again. Am I correct? If they want to bring it back again. Just want to make sure of clarification for the record.
Well, we will follow the instructions of the council.
Yeah.
So if there is a consensus of the council to continue to work on numbers, we could do that. I think, though, then the question becomes what numbers are you wanting us to work with? We've given you a couple of pretty solid numbers this evening related to term length, term of, of the bond. And the interest rate, right, if we could take advantage of it, would be half of, of what was in the spreadsheet, let's say. The, the only number in my mind I can think left that we would play with would be the dollar amount the council would be willing to contribute to the project.
And from where?
See, that's where I'm torn personally, because I, I'm like Councilor Trash. You know, I'm concerned about the debt that we're taking on the city. You know, you got, I'll just use an analogy. You, you go to a grocery store, you only got twenty dollars in your pocket. You don't go get twenty-five dollars of groceries. You know, that's something you got to look at. So you got to look at your total debt. That's why I asked the debt to income ratio. If, if we look financially good, no problem, but if we don't, you better take a little hard look at it. And, you know, I'm, I'm a little concerned about one thing that hasn't even brought up in this, this meeting. I personally, I don't, I think the way our economy is going to go is not in a positive way coming up. So that's one thing that we haven't addressed. Our economy is not, not really good right now, in my opinion, based on some factors that I'm looking at.
So if I could speak to that, the indications right now do not indicate any sort of economic downturn. Our housing values are up. The, the job market is improving, maybe not to the speed that, that was first anticipated, but the job market is improving. I, I think at this point, what we're looking at is I'm giving you, when, when I'm talking to you about what our contribution is going to be as far as an annual debt payment and everything like that, I'm giving you the worst case scenario, in that the city would be ultimately responsible for every dime of this bond until houses sell. The real, the reality is houses in this neighborhood, in this LID, are likely going to pay their, their amounts if they are required to pay them. We will see monthly or semi-monthly contributions that will offset what the city is responsible for.
True, in one sense, some of the indicators you're looking at right now, it's true.
Sure.
But when you look at building materials, it's skyrocketing.
Right.
On almost a hundred dollars a sheet of plywood. When I'm doing about almost three, three dollars and twenty-five cents a gallon of gas, and that just keeps going up.
Sure.
I feel someday that this free money that we've been handing out for the last two years is going to dry up. And there's a lot of things that we have to look at. Maybe the indicators are not showing up right now, but you got to be realistic.
Sure, and.
And that's why I'm, I'm trying to be realistic here.
Right, and I, and I agree to some extent, but I would tell you that rising fuel cost is not indicative necessarily of, of an impending crash, and, and lumber costs are starting to fall again. Maybe not to where they were yet, but they are starting to come back down. These are, these are economic indicators that, that the council and the city manager tasked me with making sure that I keep track of, because that's my job. It's my job to financially advise you as to whether or not I think that, that you as a council would be able to make these decisions and feel safe in knowing you could pay your debts. And today, my answer would be yes.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, so if we're going to adjust the money that they end up paying, whatever that figure is, do we have to have that on this thing right now, or can we adjust that later and get beyond this and not go through this again for another three hours to figure out what we want to do? Because I, I, I think we need to move forward and get this going, because I, I'm, you know, I don't want to say I'm tired of this, but I'm, I'm, you know, we, we talk and talk and talk about this, and then we don't really move on, and I think, I think it's time that, that we make a decision whether we're going to or not going to.
So I guess my question would be which, which number are you talking about changing? Are you talking about the cities? Are you talking about the city's contribution?
No, I would, I would assume, I hate to use that word, that they, he was talking about what those folks are going to pay. If it's going to be less of, of a payment over a hundred years, I don't know.
I think you have some options as far as the request for council action is concerned. You, and I, I can scroll down to the bottom, but I think your option, if you wanted to approve this LID and tell staff to finalize the figures and, and bring them back, that would be your prerogative, I guess. That, that's the staff direction that I think Mr. Towery was looking for. It does say that you could direct staff to proceed with the formation of the ID with changes. You could direct staff to proceed with the formation of the ideas currently proposed. And certainly we lay out options that are here, and maybe we didn't think of one. So if your, if your direction is approve the LID and staff, we want you to get it within, you know, we want you to change the numbers by twenty percent. I don't know, throw out a number.
Either they're going to pay or the city's going to pay.
Yeah.
Those are your two options.
Yeah.
So assuming, as we do with any capital project, we put the best estimate we can together for you. Sometimes it's a little high, sometimes it's a little low. Sometimes I've, I've actually seen some that were so far off that they just got scrapped right there on, on, on the spot. But the reality is as staff, we felt that we were given direction to change numbers, and we did that. We, we changed the formula so that it was fair for people who, it was at least more fair and took some more, for instance, I believe it's the Joneses' property is. uh, and took some more, uh, for instance, I believe it's the Jones's property is large enough for to be subdivided into three pieces technically, but because of some setbacks and and riparian ways, they can really only do two. So we took that into effect and that, and, and made that change. So I think we've gone through and changed about all we can change specifically based on the advice that came from the reviewers uh, and how we formulated and calculated these numbers. So I'm not gonna tell you, you can't tell us to try and change those again. But I'm gonna tell you, if we do any more of this, um, we're varying away from a lot of past practice. And we'll be changing the formula compared to what we've ever done before, which we can do. Uh, the other option you could say is we don't want sidewalks. Or we don't want streets, or we don't want streets or sidewalks. Um, and we can bring that back to you. A combination for it, but, but the reality is even then, who's, what's, what are you as a council comfortable contributing as a dollar amount is, is even if we bring this stuff back to you, it's still gonna come down to what is the council comfortable contributing? And that number can be anywhere from zero to the full one point six.
So to comment on that very thing, so we're, we're gonna go down Willow Street, and we're gonna tear that street up to water it. And then we're just gonna have a mess when it's all said and done.
I agree.
And so you're gonna have a big ditch down there, like in my, on my street where they they paved it and then came back three years later and trench down through the middle and it's got a what? Anyway, so it makes no sense to me to do that. Uh, and I, I'm fully, uh, I believe that you guys have done a good job at what you thought was the best possible process that we could go through. And it, it's gonna be, I didn't like it when I had to pay my money to get my street paved when I don't have a sidewalk in sight. But we, we need to move on. That's my opinion. And I'm gonna make a motion that we direct staff on number two uh, to proceed with the information of the LID as currently proposed.
Second.
A motion and a second. My roll call, please.
Counsel Sanchez.
No.
Counsel Coleman.
Yes.
Counsel Gorley.
Yes.
Counsel Trask.
Yes.
Counsel Gerson.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counsel Richards.
No.
Let's show we have five eyes with two nays.
Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Option two, I, I can go ahead.
Okay.
Option two, what reads direct staff to proceed with the formation of the LID as currently proposed, which would direct staff to prepare the resolution and ordinance necessary to form the Willow and Yucca Street Neighborhood Local Improvement District as currently proposed.
Everybody understand that? Okay, moving on.
Uh, the next step basically will be like Blair says, is that ordinance calls for a, uh, it's, I think I even gave you prior draft, or at least I drafted, uh, uh, not in your packet this time, but, um, or when we're doing the viewers report. I worked on it. But anyway, there's a, there's an ordinance that we will, we will, uh, have uh, in the, uh, in the near future. That's your next.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, if I could clarify, what you did today did not enact the lid. What you did today was instruct staff to bring the ordinance to you in which you will now vote for the lid, and we will go back again and double check the numbers. Like we said, we knew we had a couple of errors. We'll try to use, make sure there's, we've got the right bond numbers and the term, and all of that will be in the ordinance that comes to you probably at the next meeting.
It, it, it's a fairly simple one in, in its words. It doesn't get real complex. It just basically says, uh, basically what it says is you formed an LID, or you want to form an LID, uh, the ordinance says this, you're forming an LID, this is the name of the LID, uh, you can make payments over time. Um, uh, the one I had was not less than ten years allowed to you. Uh, so you can bring those out to basically the interest rate we had in there proposed would be the same interest rate we're charged if we just basically pass it on. So it, uh, and, uh, a few other items of that nature.
So just, I just want to make sure we're clear. So we, there'll be another council meeting that we'll get to talk about this all over again. Yeah.
Yeah, and it has to be read three times.
Correct.
So.
Yeah.
More council meetings.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a regular one.
Okay, moving on. I request council action, eight more emergency management.
Begin on page twenty-six of your packet. Uh, we've been talking about emergency management for oh, it seems like about eighteen straight months now uh, over various, for various causes. Uh, we've discussed during the budget here, during budget committee about the need for uh, regional partnerships in our emergency management services. Um, this document in front of you, and I gave you an additional updated document before the meeting, uh, that I handed out. There were a couple of little spelling errors, a couple of things that Robert found uh, that clarifies, for instance, while there are six entities that are part of this agreement, um, we clarified that it, it takes a unanimous vote of all six in order for any of the entities to be committed to any expenses. If that makes sense to everybody, but we can have a meeting with four. But if there's only four or five, we cannot commit anybody else to an expense. So we clarified that. Couple other little pieces of cleanup. Um, but this would allow, this is a budgeted item. It, well, it will be in the, it's in the proposed budget that was adopted by the, uh, excuse me, that is recommended.
It's in the approved budget as approved by the budget committee.
That's what I was trying to say. Um, so, uh, we've been talking about this for some time. Uh, it's a great group, uh, of people to work with. Chief Lynn has sat in on those meetings and um, I, I think this is definitely a more beneficial route for us to go.
Any questions, counsel? Okay, council directive.
So moved to the recommended.
Second that.
Motion second. My roll call, please.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Let's go seven, seven eyes with no nays approval of the emergen, regional emergency management agreement. Uh, request for council action twenty twenty-one Oregon Jamboree.
Uh, this is our annual, um, well, hadn't been annual until last year. A request from the Jamboree in order to utilize uh, city property for the Jamboree this year. Um, I think you have pretty much everything in front of you. I don't, Jeff wants to add some information, very specific.
Unfortunately, there's some errors on the resolution. So when we get to that point, we'll need to adjust some, uh, dates on there.
Any questions, the council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
I promise not to be snarky. Okay? So I noticed that they are asking that we close off Fourteenth Avenue, but you're suggesting that we don't close Fourteenth Avenue.
I think we could get by without closing portions of Fourteenth Avenue. It just really depends on, uh, the, the route the Jamboree takes. You know, I think there was still some discussion on whether with the loosening of the COVID restrictions, and I wish some Jamboree staff was here to speak towards this that may, they may utilize more of Sankey Park for, um, volunteer, volunteer access, perhaps similar things like that. Uh, as it was initially, uh, proposed to us, I believe we could, uh, put the Jamboree on safely without closing Fourteenth Avenue. That being said, things are changing frequently and that, uh, I, I believe it's safer rather than it would be the safest thing to include Fourteenth Avenue, but have discussions with the Jamboree, and if they aren't going to use Sankey Park as similar to the past, we could avoid closing that and avoid the inconvenience to the, the neighborhood in that area.
I have one more question. So the, I, I've read through the COVID plan, and I think it's a good one as far as the Jamboree itself is concerned, but what about the campgrounds?
That I do not have answers to. Um, that would be for Jamboree staff themselves.
Well, I'd like an answer to that, if I could find, if we could get one.
Is there, is there any staff on, online?
I think for, I think the Oregon Jamboree needs to be here. I think that not showing up tonight is not a good sign.
There was some confusion on their, on somebody's podcast. See if it was on the agenda or not.
I would like to, uh, um, amend the resolution as well, if, if at all possible.
Well, Mr. Mayor, can we move this to the next meeting? Without going through this, I read this too. I, I don't like them shutting down Sankey Park on Monday either, but um, I, I agree with the chief. I mean, if there's only gonna be five thousand of them, they're surely not gonna need all that parking and all that stuff. And my other concern is, is the Sankey Park still gonna be under, uh, under construction?
Now we're hope to have that, the majority of it buttoned up and at least people could travel through there and by them.
And I'll take some responsibility. I originally had it on the previous agenda, and have some of the numbers ready for you. Some vacation time with staff so we could air some of that. I, I chose to pull it last time because I didn't think the information was was ready yet. Um, so you can blame me for that. I apologize for that.
Well, we kind of blame you anyway, but that's just, I guess like.
Kind of comes with the job.
Any other questions? Okay, and the council directive.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull this, uh, for next, uh, meeting, so that we have Jamboree staff here to answer questions.
I, I think the point of order would be motion to table till the next meeting then.
Then I make a motion to table it till the next meeting.
Second.
Motion second. My roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counsel Gerson.
Yes.
Counsel Trask.
Yes.
Counsel Gorley.
Yes.
Counsel Coleman.
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez.
Yes.
Counsel Richards.
Other seven eyes, no nays to table this to the next meeting. And hopefully we get somebody from the Oregon Jamboree here, and we can make the amendments that were necessary. Um, okay, moving on to now we have a public hearing. I will show the public hearing is eight thirty-three. I will go through the brief, um, not everything. Okay. Uh, at this time, I'll just do declarations of members, like any council bias, conflict of interest, or any ex parte communications.
No. No.
No.
No.
No.
Nope.
Okay, this time staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. So the budget was approved by the budget committee on May thirteenth during their last budget meeting. Um, all of those meetings were open to the public, uh, were noticed in the new era. Um, at, at the time of passage, the, the budget committee approved a budget that is now before you in a total sum of twenty-five million fifty-five thousand five hundred twelve dollars. Um, the document is available online. There is a printed copy in the finance office for anybody who wishes to review said budget. Um, and in your packet tonight is a copy of the draft resolution that, uh, without changes um, would come before you at your next meeting for budget adoption, um, for the twenty twenty-two fiscal year budget. Um, oh, I should also add that the LB one, um, that they required notice of budget hearing for the city council before reviewing and before adopting a budget was posted in the new era of two weeks in a row on May nineteenth and the following Wednesday, which would be the twenty-sixth of May as well. So, um, lots of opportunity. The, the budget numbers are, uh, if you remember, the budget committee did approve a couple of changes um, to the proposed budget before it came to, uh, before it came to you. Those changes were, uh, we, they added ten thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars in revenue for the state gas tax line. Um, we adjusted off sixty-four thousand dollars in the electricity line in the water distribution. Um, it was a typing error, um, when we put that budget together. And then we added seventy-five thousand dollars to complete the water master plan um, based on council direction surrounding conversations about incurring debt for projects. Um, so we're trying to speed that process up, um, in the next twelve months to, to get council a clear picture on, on what is there. So those were the changes that were made. All in all, we added eleven thousand dollars in, nope, sorry, net adjustments to fund balances is actually um, twenty-one dollars is what we added to the proposed budget, um, before it was approved by the committee.
Any questions, counsel?
So I have a question. Um, in the past, when we got revenue from, from lack of a better word, pot money, um, it went into the police department. We now have a need for some possible revenues to go to dealing with the housing issue for some people who are homeless. And, um, I would like to recommend that we consider using that money for that, and then what money is left over stay in the general fund. Would that be reasonable?
So the, the beauty of the general fund is it's, it's the one place you can do whatever you want with it. So you could, as a council, utilize that, that marijuana money in the general fund for housing, for water, for parks, uh, for the library. Um, so you, you could accomplish the same goal without moving the money, I, I think.
Well, we have to have a discussion about that even being a priority if we want people not to be sleeping in doorways and to have a plan, don't we?
Yeah, and I would say that the, the approved budget document outlines proposed spending for various projects. And so if you're going to reappropriate um, or add to the expenditures in the general fund, then that's certainly something we should probably discuss before budget adoption so that the plan for next year is, is communicated to everybody and, and we're not spending on something and then kind of shifting gears in the middle. So while yes, city manager Towery is correct in that, that you have flexibility in the general fund, we should really make that change so that roadmap is clear for the coming fiscal year.
For potential expenses.
Correct.
That's what I'm asking.
Um, for the, for information, then the current budgeted amount for marijuana taxes in the next fiscal year is one hundred eleven thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars.
Sir Mayor, didn't we vote to put that into the police fund or set it aside for the police fund last conversation?
It was a lengthy conversation, certainly, but, uh, what ended up happening was there were no changes made in regards to that funding, and it remained in the general fund for the council to then determine at a later date what would be beneficial to do with it.
Mr. Mayor, I think we were talking about for police projects, certainly dealing with the homeless is a police project.
I would agree. I would agree.
I agree.
And I think we also talked about other needs of the Police Department. So I think there was discussion that police.
Yes, definitely discussion, but no formal action was taken on, on reappropriating the funds as proposed.
There was consensus to utilize the money for police, but we circled back around again that the general fund is the place where you can do whatever you want with the money. So consensus at the time was, yeah, we'll use it for police. But we can do that from the general fund, but it also gives you flexibility for whatever else may pop up within the next year to use it for something else too.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think that was the purpose of stating that it needed to be set aside for the police so it didn't get used for something else that needed to be just for the police services. I think that's why we didn't want it in the general fund.
Hi, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm a little confused because I thought it was going towards the police also. I don't know.
At the conversation at the, at the last Budget Committee meeting, we, we discussed the fact that in the past, yes, marijuana dollars actually used to be split between the general fund and the Police Department. It was actually this current fiscal year was the first year that all of the marijuana money was placed in the general fund. After changes to the state's regulations regarding marijuana money, state revenue sharing fund specifically. And then our ordinances in our code requires that any money we make, the city makes on marijuana taxes, has to go to the general fund. It can then be distributed however the, the Budget Committee and the council so desire, but originally it has to land in the general fund. So for the current fiscal year and as subsequently the, the next fiscal year, the 2022 year that you're currently reviewing, that money is just being plopped into the general fund with no specific tag other than for general fund expenditures.
So currently our police officers, our police force have new radios, new cars. They, they, we take really good care of our police force. We really do, and we can be proud of that. The, the homeless situation affects them heavily, probably more than other departments. And it affects our downtown. It affects our citizenry. And I would just like to see that as identified priority. Not that we have to identify how much funds that we would need for fencing or whatever it is that is identified that to address that issue, but I think we need to put some skin in the game to help offset on the other end. And I think we need to, this is a, a good way to do that. So.
Okay, what I wanted to, and Loggia brought up for you is to, that's kind of small. Let's see if I can fix that. I don't know if that's a whole lot better, but I can kind of walk through it a little bit. So this is the general fund and the, the budgeted expenditures for the 2022 fiscal year. The contingency amount, as we've discussed previously, is, is a, a set amount based on, it's a percentage amount based on the total expenditures in the fund. So what you do have the opportunity to change and you can change it in one of two ways, if you wanted to reappropriate some things, is you could take money from either one of these categories, salaries and wages, employee benefits, capital outlays, materials and service, those items and reappropriate that to be used for homeless, homelessness. Or you could add expenditures to this fund to, to meet the same goal. Reappropriating and, and leaving a net zero change means that you, that you as a council would need to determine what in the budget is being sacrificed to, to, for that allocation. If you add expenditures, then there wouldn't be any sacrificing what is currently budgeted. Those are your actions.
So, Mr. Tari, how would we get where we need to be?
You're, you're asking to make a change in the budget. The budget is a document. So as an organization, you ask yourself, are you goal-driven or are you budget-driven? What you're, you're asking to earmark funds for something. I mean, we can make any change that you want, but council would have to make, by a directive, a motion and a second, give us a dollar amount to make the change to the budget. So how much do you want to, how much do you want to set aside for this? For this project? And then we would make that change in the budget and.
Well, correct, correct me wrong, Mr. Tari, is you can approve the budget and at that first been approved, you can come back and the council, if the chief came forth and said, I, I need this, as a council, we can approve whatever the chief want and we pull from that, based on the budget, correct?
You, you always have, depending upon the ten percent is the magic number, correct?
Ten percent is.
So if you're changing something by more than ten percent, then you'll have to go through a bit more of a process.
A public hearing specifically.
Yeah, a public hearing. If it's less than ten percent, then you as the council have the ability to simply change the budget. But we would need a number to go by.
Do we need to at least make it a priority so that we could pull it from the general fund if we needed it? Because I don't know what we're looking at. I imagine that we can get a lot.
There's some exciting.
That kind of thing.
Yeah, no, there's some exciting things going on.
If, if I might make a recommendation, I think if there's still some question mark as to, to what you are potentially going to need, a- and if the council decides that, that yes, they want to use some dollars to tackle homelessness in the coming fiscal year, I would add expenditure authority as part of this adoption process. I would add whatever amount you want, whether it's the full marijuana money allocation, doesn't mean you necessarily have to use it. But then it's allocated, we're clear, we don't have to do a supplemental later. It's a cleaner process.
I would just, I don't have any idea with, what that number could, could or should be is my only concern.
Well, so if it's in the general fund later on, and we can't, we can't change this right now, can we, by more than ten percent?
You can, yeah, as long as you don't exceed it. And actually, in this process.
Higher than the two numbers, correct?
Five percent.
Yes. So, but if it's in the general fund, can we not allocate that? I know we have to go before and do the process and all that stuff. If we want to take fifty thousand dollars out there, we have to do supplemental. Is that not true? So that might, it's, it might be a pain in the neck, but it might be what we need to do.
So if you chose to make revisions to the general fund as part of this adoption process, you could add up to a hundred twenty-eight thousand in expenditures and not hit the limit at which we would have to redo this public hearing.
Okay, is that because that's the whole general fund?
Yeah, it's the total dollar fund, total general fund allocation that they look at.
But that could be not a good thing if we're taking a hundred and twenty thousand dollars out of there. I don't know. I'm just saying. I, I think we could, we could put this off until we do get the budget done and then we could figure out that number because we don't know.
We don't.
Yeah. And so i- if, if we start out with twenty thousand dollars or whatever it is, and then we decide we need another twenty thousand, I guess we could go do that again. So at this point, it seems like it's not too relevant, other than the fact that it is because of the, 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 the problems we're having.
That's why I brought it up. Why muddy the water right now?
Yeah. I agree with Counsel Gor. We need to, we need to address this, but we, we have no idea how much that's going to cost and what we're willing to pay, you know, so.
But.
I'm okay with this.
So, but we don't have it as a priority. It's easier to do it now than later and it's not an allocated fund. So the money stays in the general fund if we don't even use it, right? So I just, that's all I was thinking.
Counsel Gorley is correct on all points.
Congratulations.
I'd said Counsel Gorley is right on all points.
Say that again.
Twice was good.
You don't do that often enough.
I don't, I don't. You're right. This was recorded in case anybody wants to go back and watch it again later.
I don't want Dave's head to explode.
Let's come up with a council directive to move this thing forward.
And for the record, we're still in the public hearing, so the, the council questions.
I would be interested in following whatever staff's recommendation would be because I believe that they are well-versed on this issue.
So it was a motion?
There's no motion, is there?
Motion to do what staff says? It's not supposed to work that way.
It's a public hearing. I just want to move this forward.
Well, I believe she said.
You have a recommendation.
We do recommendations all the time.
So I guess what I would say is based on my conversations literally this morning, they didn't feel like anything was going to happen in the real immediate future. They didn't foresee having anything until probably the fall, ready to go. Is council, it's a hundred and eleven thousand, is, is council comfortable just allocating roughly half of that towards this problem, a quarter of that? Is there a number? Because remember, once you allocate it, essentially you're giving Brandon and I the authorization to spend it. Now, we have a history of not spending money. I think we as staff have been very good of not spending money frivolously and certainly not without the council's authorization. But I will say this is probably the only time I can think of we've asked you for money without having a plan or an estimate. Yeah, Counsel, I don't know. I'm, I'm really any help to you. I'm sorry. I, I feel like I'm failing you. I guess, is there a dollar amount council is comfortable spending on this? I would foresee in the next year, a lot of it is going to have to do with planning and infrastructure type things. Grant matching funds, generally if you want to go for a grant, usually you, you do, you score much better when you have matching funds. I, I wouldn't foresee any of this being for any kind of necessarily personnel costs. I think the earliest thing you're going to see out of this is maybe some fencing, water, power kinds of things.
You might need to lay some pipe in the ground.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Were you talking about that proposal that we brought forth between ad hoc committee?
Yes. Not the entirety, but part of it. No, not entirety, just part of it.
They're not playing.
The essential piece.
Yeah.
So I would move that we authorize staff to spend up to fifty thousand dollars of the money that we're discussing. And if we need more for infrastructure or anything, we come back to the council for that remaining part of that. Does that sound about right? Remember, if we don't use it, it doesn't go anywhere.
Be a first for a public hearing, but go ahead with your motion.
Yeah, I think you would, you would need to, yeah, close the public hearing.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah.
This is the first.
Yeah.
Supposed to do that.
Yeah, I think that you want to, we want to close the public hearing and then.
And then make any adjustments.
And then make any adjustments after the public.
Okay. So, come back to that. Let's go on. Go on to public comment. Anybody would like to make a comment testified before on regarding this? Do we have anybody online? Probably fell asleep a long time ago. Okay, at this time, we will close the public hearing at eight fifty-five. Now for further discussions. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I got some questions from constituent about the permanent tax rate and I see it in here in this budget thing.
So it's set at one dollar and forty-one cents. However, people's home values are going up, so they're still paying more money. Is that something that can be changed to a lower rate or help seniors or people on fixed incomes that property values are going up, so they're essentially paying more in property tax?
How much time do you have?
So I.
I just had to ask the question.
The, yes, assessed values increase three percent a year as long, and, and I'm just going for, for the permanent tax rate, I'll leave it at that because that's the simplest answer. Three percent a year is, is generally the increase they will see in the value. That permanent tax rate is the maximum that, that the council could adopt. And so if you as a council decide you only want to adopt a dollar thirty per thousand, you have that flexibility.
Excuse me, Mr. I have a question for Brandon. And how much does that dollar forty-one bring to the city in property taxes?
According to your budget documents, it generates for next year, seven hundred ten thousand forty-two dollars.
Out of what size of budget?
The total revenue for the general fund is three point eight million, three point nine million.
What's the size of our total budget for the city of Sweet Home?
Oh. Thirty, with transfers and everything and, and all of the, the total requirements is thirty-nine million four hundred sixty-nine thousand seven hundred sixteen dollars.
And about seven hundred thousand comes to the city in property taxes. Why do people see such a large property tax rate? What else is added to that?
Seven hundred thousand for the permanent rate, and then there is certainly the Police Department and the Library that, that, our tax rates also that add to that.
And how much does the Library and the Police Department bring in?
Police Department generates about three million dollars a year in the property ta- in property taxes and the Library is about four hundred fifty thousand a year.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, uh, some history on this one dollar and forty-one cents. We went and begged them to let us replace or redo that and they turned us down. And we are the lowest, one of the lowest in the state of Oregon and they just shined us on. It was back when Craig was here and we went up and he proposed this thing and, you know, and, and it, it just fell through. They don't, they didn't go for that, so.
The, the entire state of Oregon would have to vote to allow the city of Sweet Home to change our tax rate up or down either direction. It would take a vote of the entire state of Oregon.
I was told when I worked at the Capitol, never mention it for the city of Sweet Home.
So just for the record, since it was asked, the total property taxes that the city generates is about twelve percent of the overall budget.
Thank you for the information that the entire state would have to change the rate and not the council.
They, and, and yes, would have to change the rate to increase it. You can lower it. The, the state, there, the state is not required to lower it. They are required to increase it.
Any other discussions?
Kind of a side note, but I'm not against lowering it.
And good luck with that one too.
So you want to give up?
Yeah. At this time, decisions of the council, going now to what you were.
I move that we make it a priority to deal with the homeless issue and how they are affecting our community and to set aside fifty thousand dollars to be used towards this issue. And if we need more, to be able to come back to the council for anything above that, within that spectrum of the pot money. I don't want to touch any other money.
I have a motion second, my real call, please.
Counsel Coleman, yes. Counsel Sanchez.
Yes.
Counsel Richards.
Yes.
Counsel Gorley.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
While the record shows seven eyes, no nays, move fifty thousand to the general fund. So at this time, um, resolution number sixteen for twenty twenty-one, that's not for decision this evening? I didn't think so. But that will be coming up on the next, next meeting, if I'm staying correct, on uh, June twenty-second.
Correct.
Okay. Um, now moving on to requests for council action under ordinance bills number five um, for twenty twenty-one. Questions of council on that? Directive to move this forward to first reading?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we move this forward to the first reading.
I'll second that.
Yeah, motion second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Seven eyes, none ayes, uh, move this forward for first reading. Go ahead and for first reading.
No. Five for twenty twenty-one. An ordinance amending the Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point twenty-four point zero ninety, seventeen point twenty-eight point zero ninety, and seventeen point thirty point zero ninety, manufactured homes on individual lots. Whereas, the city of Sweet Home seeks to ensure the safety of manufactured homes placed within the city, and whereas, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on May third, twenty twenty-one for the proposed amendments to Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point twenty-four point zero ninety, seventeen point twenty-eight point zero ninety, and seventeen point thirty point zero ninety, and whereas, the Planning Commission followed the text amendment procedures under chapter February twentieth, ninety powers and duties, and has provided a report to the city council along with its recommendation to consider the proposed text changes, and whereas, the city council held a public hearing on these proposed text changes on May eleventh, twenty twenty. Now therefore, 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 the city of Sweet Home does ordain as follows. Section one, Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point twenty-four point zero ninety, seventeen point twenty-eight point zero ninety, and seventeen point thirty point zero ninety, each titled Homes on Individual Lots, are retitled Manufactured Homes on Individual Lots, and amended to read as follows. Manufactured homes are permitted in accordance with the following standards. The minimum lot area, setback, and height standards of the subject zone shall also apply to manufactured homes sighted on individual lots. Size. The manufactured home shall be multi-sectional and have at least one thousand square feet of gross floor area. B Performance Standards. The exterior thermal envelope must meet the standards specified by state law for single-family dwellings, as defined in ours four hundred and fifty-five point zero one zero. C Removal of towing equipment. All towing hitches, wheels, running lights, and other towing-related equipment shall be removed within thirty, thirty, days after installation of the manufactured home. D Foundations. The manufactured home shall be placed on an excavated and backfilled foundation with no more than twelve inches of enclosing material exposed above grade. Where the building site has a sloped grade, no more than twelve inches of the enclosing material shall be exposed on the uphill side of the home. If the home is placed on a basement, the twelve, twelve inch limitation shall not apply. Furthermore, the twelve, twelve inch limitation shall not apply if the requirements of the flood hazard district mandate that the home be elevated more than twelve, twelve inches above grade. The foundation shall meet building code and flood hazard area, if applicable, standards. The base of the manufactured home shall be enclosed continuously at the perimeter with either concrete, concrete block, brick, stone, or a combination thereof. E Utilities. The manufactured home shall be provided with storm drainage, sanitary sewer, electric, telephone, and potable water utility services with easements dedicated where necessary to provide such services. All such utilities shall be located underground unless waived by the city building official where underground service would require an exception to local prevalent conditions. Manufactured homes shall not be occupied purposes unless connected to local water, sewer, and electrical systems. F Historical Sites. No manufactured home shall be located on property containing a historic landmark, or, on a lot or parcel immediately adjacent to property containing a historic landmark. For the purpose of this chapter, a historic landmark is property designated by the Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan as containing a significant historical resource. G Roofing. The manufactured home must have a composition asphalt, fiberglass, shake, or tile roof with a nominal pitch of not less than three, three feet in height for each twelve, twelve feet in width. H Gutters and Downspouts. The manufactured home shall be provided with gutters and downspouts to direct stormwater away from the placement's site to the city stormwater system, if available. I Exterior Siding and Finish. The exterior siding of the manufactured home must have wood or composite exterior siding, and otherwise use the same materials as neighboring houses. J Garage or Carport. A garage or carport of like material and color of the manufactured home is required. The garage or carport shall be placed on the property prior to occupancy of the manufactured home. K Off-Street Parking. Parking and improvements shall be as specified in chapter seventeen point zero eight. Section two, expediency clause. It is hereby adjudged and declared that existing conditions are such that this ordinance is needed to be enforced immediately upon its passage and approval. Therefore, this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force in effect from and after underscore.
After blank date twenty twenty-one passed by the council and approved by the mayor this blank day of twenty twenty-one, blank mayor, test blank city manager, ex officio city recorder.
Any questions of counselors?
Mr. Mayor, if I could real quick, we do not require an expediency clause for this. That was, uh, that should have been removed. If we wanna do an expediency clause, we certainly can. If the council would like to, we could do a second reading tonight. Uh, the edit would be that the expediency clause should be added into the title, and there should also be a whereas in which it would state that it was being read with the expediency clause. But we, we're, there's no real reason for it to be expedited, yeah.
There's no need.
So I would say we could strike section two.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I beg to differ. I think we need an expediency clause. I think we needed to get this taken care of right away.
Okay. I have.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, does this affect or is this to put new manufactured homes in?
This is, this is only for newly placed manufactured homes. It does not apply to any homes that are already placed.
Okay, gonna get a consensus, council, do you wanna move this to an expediency?
Call Strass.
Oh, sure. Yeah. Do it. That'd be a yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Okay, we'll go ahead and we'll do this in expediency um, for uh, second reading by title only this evening.
I believe there still needs to be a vote on the first reading.
Yeah. There has to be a motion and a second, and we have to be unanimous.
Forward, right, and everybody's got to agree.
Right.
Everybody's got, if it's gonna be read twice, same meeting, everybody's got to agree on.
Right, okay. Okay, need a motion and a second, moving forward.
So moved?
Second.
Motion second, first and second. My roll call, please.
I think you need to take a, a sentence or a company, says that you're all in agreement.
That's what they're doing right now. The motion is to enact the expediency clause.
That's. No.
Let's get all on the same page. It's expedient, what the expediency clause does is that the it cuts off the thirty days that it would normally go into effect after. You pass an ordinance without an expediency clause, it's got thirty days before it goes into effect. That's what the expediency clause does. Separate, totally separate from that, is that our charter says that you can read it twice at the same meeting if everybody is in agreement that you can do that. So that's where we are right now. We need a vote, we need at least a consensus, a vote of raising of the hand, something that shows that everybody's in agreement to read it for the second time.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna request for a vote for expediency because we're online. You know, so that anybody's online, so I have to do by roll call.
Right, and, and that's fine.
So not first consensus, because we're on roll.
The expediency doesn't require, that just requires a council vote. You want one, that could be done by a, a four-three deal. That doesn't matter. If you wanna read it twice at the same meeting, though, you have to have everybody in agreement to read it for the second time. Okay, do I need to do a, a roll call because of virtual one? Yes, I would do a roll call to.
Even though.
So, so could we restate the motion? So you've already adopted it with the expediency clause, right? We expressed, no, we're gonna keep the expediency clause. So this would be a motion to hold a second reading tonight in which it would require a unanimous vote.
Yes.
So can we, can, can we restate that motion? I apologize.
Yes, I make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we read it for the second time tonight.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman, yes. Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Okay, we have seven eyes, no nays, to move this forward for second reading, expediency.
City of Sweet Home ordinance number five for twenty twenty-four. An ordinance amending the Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen two four zero nine zero, seventeen two eight zero nine zero, and seventeen three zero zero nine zero. Manufactured homes on individual lots with an expediency clause.
Any questions of councils? Okay, need a council directive to move this forward for third final reading on June twenty-second by title only.
So moved?
I second it.
Motion second. My roll call, please.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes. While the record shows seven eyes, no nays, move this forward for third final reading on June twenty-second. Reports of committees, any committee reports? Okay. Um, moving on to mayor's report, I do have one thing to let everybody know. Um, the, if I were a mayor contest, we had a winner. First place in the elementary poster category, Madeline Coleman. Congratulations. Nothing else to report, city manager report.
Uh, need to let the council make you aware of a situation on the South Hills Trail. As we've gone through and done some work in there, we've noticed that some of the neighbors have encroached upon city property. And some of them a little, some of them quite a bit. Um, they have fenced off areas that are not theirs to be fenced off. They have removed trees that were not theirs to remove. So we will kindly and gently ask that they correct these uh, errors. Um, but the process is through the code enforcement officer. So you may hear from several people who are getting these letters and not sure what or why. Um, I'll let Blair add if he has any more detail, but uh, some people may not understand, some people may not be happy. We are talking some fairly nice permanent type fences that are gonna have to be moved, so.
So i, if you're not aware, the South Hills Trail was formerly a railroad right-of-way that was abandoned and the city took it over, and it's been a, a great asset for the community to have that, that trail in place. Unfortunately, it's not fenced. And so to the casual observer from a home, it may not appear that anybody cares. Um, but in fact, we do. So the concern that I have, I, I supervise our code and code compliance officer, and my main concern is, is making sure that he is not uh, suffering undue anger and and reactions from the public. In this case, it's something we wanna make sure that people are aware of and make sure that, that, that they're aware that this is not us trying to uh, impede anyone from allowing, from enjoying their backyard or what they think is their backyard, but to really keep some residents from stealing from other residents, uh, because this is something that belongs to the entire city. And so we just wanted to make sure that you were aware of it, um, because we do feel that it's appropriate to crack down on this and not to, not to accept this. And um, and, but we, because of the magnitude of this encroachment and the number of people who are doing it, it does have the potential to kind of blow up in the public eye, and we wanna make sure we control the narrative here and make it clear that this is city property that we are protecting.
Is this tenth, between Elm and Tenth side?
Elm and um, the, the, yes, it's on the Elm side, the Cedar, Cedar uh, street side of the trail, mostly. I think there's one on the other side of it.
Isn't this part of our park system?
It is.
Okay.
I'll, I'll remind council, a few years ago, uh, we had the big windstorm, trees fell, and we were forced to do some maintenance there. There was property, matter of fact, I think Robert lost a shed. I had some debt there. Um, there were a few members of the community that were upset that we, how dare we clear fall, you know, already fell trees. Um, so it is, it's definitely valued uh, by the community and utilized. And that's all I've got for tonight.
Okay. Department Director's reports, anybody having for the directors?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, just a reminder that tomorrow is shut-off day. Uh, as of close of business today, I had sixty-one uh, that, that still had unpaid utility bills.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I know if you know, but there are some trees that fell down in the back here. Uh, and there's, there's gonna be wood available for anybody that would like to have them. We're gonna be um, Wally, the parks guy, and I'm gonna cut that open if they wanna come and get it and make a big donation to my college fund, that'd be, but my kids' fund. What's the matter with your eyes, Hugh?
I think he's having a seizure over there.
So being that we are a timber town in our current uh, policies, uh, we, we cannot give timber away.
I was gonna say, there's a little bit of a.
We have.
Law.
It's very unique, but anytime we have timber, there's, there's a process, so.
So what do we have?
You're giving me spasms.
So what do we have to do? You just straighten me out here.
Well, I'm not exactly sure, cause this isn't sellable timber, right? I'm sure.
So then. I don't wanna, I'm not just kidding about the money. I just.
Yeah, no, there's, there's an exception to it, so.
Yeah.
I'm just.
No, I don't.
Probably just overreacting.
Yeah.
No.
So I, I think if we could get some people, because we're gonna cut it up and we're gonna split it. So if they wanna come and get it, that'd be a great thing. Maybe we can put that out on the board.
Counselor Trask. What type of trees? Oh, it's oak.
White oak, to be specific.
That burns nicely.
Doesn't the wrestling club um, take and sell wood?
I don't know.
I think they do, is to say, yeah.
Some, you can get Boys and Girls Club and some of those to do it, but um, I think.
There's also a church that gives it a way to people in need.
Oh, that's awesome.
I don't care if it comes and gets it, I'm just kidding about the money.
Thank you.
So.
Point of it is, is he's not kidding about the prestige.
Yes. Yeah. So anyway, somebody wants to come and.
Yeah, you gotta go through a certain procedure, you just have to look it up.
Okay, all right. Well, we don't have a cut a lot of it up right yet, but we're gonna start getting crazy and, cause it's pretty good sized trees.
Yeah, well, well, uh, we can do some homework and, and work on it, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Anything else of the director's reports? City attorney. Anything that council business good to order? Nothing further, we will adjourn at nine twenty.